Mike, would you like to lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with equal justice and for all.
Okay. And this is a public hearing, and Derek, do you want to read the headline?
Well, we want to do the roll call first, and then afterwards, I think, just as a preliminary matter, since we don't have the mayor and the deputy mayor here, I would just like you all to confirm who you'd like to run the meeting for this morning, but I thank Councilwoman Caramba for taking the lead and getting everything started.
Okay, so let's have the roll call.
Amy Caramba?
Here.
Sorry, Councilwoman Laura Carr?
Here.
Councilwoman Michael Gibson?
Here.
Councilwoman Fred Forbes?
Here.
And unless you want to kick me off, I'll run the meeting. Is that okay?
That's fine.
Okay. And Derek, do you want to start us on?
Yes. This morning, we have a hearing, a zoning ordinance of the city of Benita Springs, Florida, considering a request by American Pet Resort LLC to rezone approximately 1.55 acres from neighborhood commercial district and light industrial to commercial plan development located at 8725 and 8739 Commerce Drive, Benita Springs, Florida, 34134, and providing for an effective date. Okay, I think, I understand we have had at least one member of the public who would like to possibly from the zoning board speak at the beginning.
Okay.
Prior to presentations, if that would be meanable to the council.
Please come forward.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
My name is Larry Curlander. I live in Benita Springs, and I currently serve as chairman of the zoning board. The case before you this morning is the first case where the materials presented to you are, contain the revised materials that we have been working on for a year. Even though it hasn't been enacted into law yet, the developer was kind enough to do it. The result was of having this new format with the materials that were plain is your packet is a lot less than it used to be. It is much clearer. The issues are clearly defined, and instead of it being a four-hour meeting of the zoning board, it was a one-hour meeting, and the zoning board was unanimously approved the project. There were a couple of issues. The two issues that the zoning board focused on were disposal of waste and parking. You might have other issues. This is a prelude of what I think we'll see in the future. It is enormously helpful, and we're very appreciative of the developer. Contrary to the advice of the city attorney, I did engage in a conversation with the developer about the billboard on the property, and because I think it's phenomenally ugly there, and I think it hurts the developer. And he graciously said he's going to look at it to see if there was some way he could remove it. But other than that, I just wanted to bring you up to date on how, what you voted to approve. You now have before you the first evidence of what it's going to look like going forward. If you have any questions? If not, thank you very much.
I just want to thank you for the effort, and the zoning board for the effort to make this more comprehensive, so that when it does come to us, we can really understand the project, and we appreciate the efforts of the developer to cooperate with you. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
At this time, I'll turn it over to the applicant to give their initial presentation.
Are we sworn in?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Anyone who's willing, anyone who intends to speak today, please raise your right hand and affirm that you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Okay, that's everybody.
Good morning. My name is Stacy Hewitt, and I'm a planner with Banks Engineering, and I'm representing the applicant this morning. The application, again, is a request to rezone two contiguous parcels of 1.55 acres from neighborhood commercial and light industrial to commercial plan development. The request is to allow for a maximum of 17,400 square feet, animal boarding and daycare facility, and ancillary uses. With me this morning, I also have Gregory DiSario, the landscape architect for the project, and the engineer Brent Addison will also be making a presentation. Mr. Banks, the transportation engineer, is here if there's any questions regarding transportation. And we also have Brian Franco with the applicant with American Pet Resort. He's here as well, if there's any additional questions. The staff report for the project does recommend approval, and the applicant is in agreement with all of the proposed conditions, and I would like to adopt the staff report and the attachments as part of my testimony this morning. As just mentioned, we did go to the zoning board on March 19th, and they did unanimously recommend approval of the project. They did add a condition to staff's recommended conditions that two additional parking spaces be provided, either through redesigning the proposed stormwater management system or removal of the existing billboard. The applicant is, has prepared an alternate master concept plan that's part of your packet that demonstrates either option to add two parking spaces, and at the, if the developer wishes at the time of site development, he may choose to do both options as well. And this is the, two additional parking spaces here, if we were to, option one, if we were to remove the billboard, and then these two additional parking spaces by the drop-off are additional to, another option to add two additional parking spaces to the project. The site is located at the northeast corner of US 41 and Commerce Drive. It's about .38 miles south of Pelican Colony Boulevard and about .46 mile north of old US 41. It's right across from the Congo River Gulf. This is the future man, land use map. It is split future land use categories with general commercial along the frontage and industrial along the rear of the property. And it also has split zoning of commercial neighborhood and light industrial. This is an aerial demonstrating the surrounded uses of the project. I would like to point out in the narrative, I will be discussing the distance to residential, and the closest residential is up to the northwest to an assisted living facility in this area, or also down to the southwest is an existing mobile home community, but there are no adjacent residential uses to the site. These are some pictures, just to familiarize you with the area, that shows the existing frontage road that we will be connecting to. This picture number four is actually the adjacent open storage and former recycling facility, and there's also, the billboard that was discussed is down here demonstrated in picture two, as well as this is a view down to Commerce Drive as it exists today. This is the environmental report that was done on the site, and it is, the majority of the site is disturbed land. It is invaded by exotics, and there were no listed species observed on the project. This is the master concept plan before the additional parking spaces that shows the existing billboard location in the parking lot. We are extending the existing frontage road down to, through the site to align with the driveway across Commerce Drive. There is some detention area in the parking area. We do have the amenity zone with a bench, trash, and bike rack with some canopy trees down in the southwest corner of the site. There is the proposed outdoor exercise areas that surround the building to the north, the east, and the south. The schedule of uses proposed for the project are strictly related to the pet, the pet services that will be permitted on-site, and there was one change with staff that we made to the property development regulations was to reduce the maximum building height to 30 feet instead of 35 feet, and the developers agreeable to that change. This is a site plan, again, just showing the dumpster enclosure as well as the master concept plan. These are elevations of the proposed building. This is the west elevation facing US 41. The north elevation that faces the adjacent shopping center to the north. This is the south elevation that is facing Commerce Drive, and the east elevation that is facing the adjacent recycling and open storage facility. These are just some renderings, giving a better view of the development. There are three deviations associated with the request. The first deviation is a request to deviate from Land Development Code Section 4-893-B1, which requires a 20-foot US 41 buffer, and the request is to allow an alternate landscape betterment plan. There are physical constraints that prevent the site from providing this buffer with the stubout to the frontage road up to the north. It's, the existing frontage road is only about eight feet from the property line, which really limits our distance and area up there. There's also an existing six-foot public utility easement along the US 41 frontage and a drainage easement. There's also an existing sidewalk stubout that we will be connecting to, and we'll be swerving the frontage road over to connect to the driveway to the south to allow for some buffering in addition in that area. It, the plan provides for the required vehicular and pedestrian interconnects, and connectivity is a significant purpose of the US 41 overlay, and we feel that the proposed alternate landscape betterment plan justifies the request. An approval of this deviation would enhance the achievements of the plan development, and it also promotes the general intent to protect the public health, safety, and welfare. At this time, to explain the alternate landscape betterment plan, I would like to introduce Gregory DiSario. Good morning.
This slide shows the landscape betterment plan that we're proposing for the site. As part of the betterment, a couple of things we're doing. Current, with the, with the code, there is no requirement for a north buffer or an east buffer. We are provide, we are providing a buffer, though, along the north and east. We've added general trees throughout the site. We added ground covers, again, through, to the west buffer. The deviation that we're asking for, for the west buffer along US 41 is really for the width of it. We're not deleting any plant material from the, what normally would be required, and we're also adding some ground covers to give an extra tiered effect along west forty, or the west buffer. We're providing parking hedges where possible to screen, additionally screen the parking lot. The detention areas are planted, and the 100% native vegetation is being used throughout the site. The plant list above just quantifies what, what is code versus betterment as far as quantity of plant material, and as you can see, we're proposing 13 additional trees, or actually 21 additional trees, 15 additional palms, and numerous shrubbed ground covers to enhance the landscaping throughout the entire site. And the enhancements are spread throughout the site, not, not just limited to the US 41 buffer where the deviation is being requested.
Deviation two is a request to deviate from Land Development Code Section 4-1072-C1, which requires a minimum lot size for outdoor exercise facilities of five acres to allow a minimum lot size of 1.55 acres. The existing commercial and industrial properties surrounding the site lead to the nature of this request as well. There's unique conditions of the proposed use, and no residential properties are near the project site. The two that I had referenced earlier on the aerial, the nearest across US 41, the Leisure Time Mobile Home Park is approximately 600 feet, and the Diamond Oaks Village Senior Living Apartments. The use is screened from the view of US 41, and we've added buffers and hedgerow abutting the outdoor exercise areas to further screen them from the adjacent sites. There is a similar use that exists on a half-acre site in the Burnwood Business Park, which is a successful development of this type that is less than the five acres, and our site's 1.55 acres, which is greater than that existing use. The applicant is operating 33 existing resorts of this nature, and they have an established business model of over 13 years with operational procedures in place to mitigate odor and noise. They limit the size and temperament of the playgroups to minimize barking. They monitor playtimes with a trained playtime coordinator who's responsible for keeping the dogs engaged, and they monitor the stress levels if any of them, to minimize any nuisance that may come up. They have frequent waste removal of the, for the outdoor area, and there is compliance with regional management inspections to ensure that there's a clean and safe environment. Deviation three is a request to deviate from Land Development Code Section 4-1072-C2, which requires a minimum setback of 200 feet from any outdoor exercise facility to an abutting lot under separate ownership or to a street right-of-way. The request is to allow a minimum setback of five feet to the north, 30 feet to the east, and 18 feet to Commerce Drive. Similar, and the justifications are similar to the previous request, where this is in an existing commercial and industrial area. The, most of the, there's an industrial and commercial shopping center along the western portion of the north property line, but back where the outdoor exercise area is, it actually abuts the open storage area to the north, and to the east is the office area that's associated with that open storage location, and then the 18 feet to Commerce Drive. Again, there's a similar use on a half-acre lot that also, in Burnwood Business Park, that's located, has outdoor areas located less than 200 feet, and similar to the subject I'd like to introduce Brent Addison, the engineer of the project, to talk about the stormwater management and engineering on the site.
Good morning. For the record, Brent Addison with Banks Engineering. So the site that we're talking about, as Stacy said before, is 1.55 acres. It's located in the Spring Creek watershed, according to the South Lee County watershed study. Right now, there is currently no existing ERP permit on-site. The existing drainage drains from west to east into the Benita Industrial Park. We're proposing dry detention. We are also providing an additional 50% water quality with a total of the extra half-inch that's required by the comprehensive plan. This is adjacent to US 41, so we'll be required to get a drainage permit with them, but in this case, it will be an exception as it drains away from 41. And then ultimately, we'll provide a self-certification permit with South Florida when we're done, due to the size of the project. Let me, can I see that?
Yep.
There we go. So, as Stacy also mentioned before, we have a series of interconnected dry detention through the site. It runs around the back, ultimately coming down and draining through a control structure here, which drains into the existing swell on Commerce Drive. The play areas in the back where the, where the dogs will be outside playing has a series of underground exfiltration trenches to properly drain, drain that area, which will then go through there and into the dry detention. We're proposing access to connect this, which has been, you know, kind of a hole, a hole in the road for, for quite some time, and we'll be able to provide connectivity, not for just for us, but the other uses to the north, which will now have access to, full access at Commerce Drive and 41. We're going to have, like I said, we have the parking on-site, a dumpster in this area, drop-off area through here, and then, according to the updated master concept plan with the alternate, we're going to be either providing two additional parking spaces on this site in either one of these locations to kind of address some of the concerns about parking that was brought up during zoning. And back to Stacy.
The request is consistent with the comprehensive plan. It's consistent with Policy 1.1.14, the general commercial. It's also consistent with Policy 1.1.16, the industrial future land use category. And the, the project is consistent with Objective 1.11 and Policy 1.11.1. And the request before you does also comply with the Land Development Code findings required for the request. The applicant has approved compliance with the Benita Plan, the Land Development Code, and any other applicable code or regulation with approval of the requested deviations. The request will meet or exceed all performance and locational standards set forth for the use with approval of the requested deviations. The request is consistent with the intensities and general uses in the plan. It's compatible with the existing or planned uses in the area. Approval of the request will not place an undue burden upon existing transportation or planned infrastructure facilities, and will be served by streets with the capacity to carry traffic generated by the development. The request will not adversely affect environmentally critical areas or natural resources. The proposed mix of uses is appropriate at the subject location. The recommended conditions are, provide sufficient safeguards and are reasonably related with the request. The deviations requested enhance the achievement of the objectives of the plan development, and they preserve and promote the general intent to protect the public's health, safety, and welfare. And the public facilities are available and adequate to service the request. That can, I did want to add one thing to the presentation, is we did, the application was filed before the requirement for the neighborhood meetings, but we did have one before it was adopted while we were under review. So we did have the, sent out notices to everybody within 1,000 feet and had, held the public information meeting, and there, nobody showed up with any comments, so I just wanted to add that to the record. But we're available for any questions, if you have any.
Are there any questions from council?
How much fill are we adding to the site?
Let me request the engineer.
Let me double-check Brent Addison for the record again.
Just on the average.
Yeah, I mean, it's, so... Probably about two, two and a half feet.
Would it be fair to say that when we have major storms like we had with the Little Flood and with Irma, that there was a lot of water that stood on that property?
I don't know. I did not witness what, what happened on that property at the time.
With John Domer, do you have any information on that?
I can't tell you that we're not in a flood zone as designated by FEMA.
Are there any? I have some questions if no... I just want to see if my reasoning, if I'm getting the reasoning that you've given to us the way I read in regard to the deviations, because when you look at the numbers, the difference between five acres or one and a half acres and, and the deviations about the 200 feet versus five or 10 feet, they seem extreme, but I believe because of the, the site of this place, which is contiguous with industrial and general commercial and the distance away from every, any residential area that, and other conditions that, and betterments that you've put in, that you feel that, we feel that that's being protected of the residentials. Because those, that regulation, I believe, was put into the code to protect residents, pretty much. So that's why we feel comfortable about it. Is that the reasoning that you're presenting here today?
Yes, and also, the request as far as the separations, that would allow outdoor areas with just a chain link fence without any buffering. So we've also, as you had mentioned, the betterments and the conditions to the site that we've provided screening to buffer those areas, those also help to alleviate that setback reduction.
And the one area where I still have some concern, and I've discussed this with our staff, is, is in regard to the, the outdoor exercise area. I know you have some kind of piping, which I don't quite understand how that works, because we, you started your presentation saying that it was in the Spring Creek watershed area, and Spring Creek already has some issues, and I would be concerned even if you pick up the deposits and then water, you know, wash that, that area down, and there's some, is that a contained, is it impervious where those, where the exercise areas are, so that's all gathered into a pipe and then taken away? I mean, how does that work?
So, again, Brent Addison for the record, it's a, basically like astroturf in the back where the, where the dogs are, and then that, that can drain, and then that drains through into this underground pipe network that goes, that's absorbed.
What's below the pipe?
That pipe network would drain into our dry detention area.
But how does it drain there? I mean, is it?
Through pipes.
But you, I mean, the pipe isn't covering the whole exercise. You have like pipes running like this way or something?
Yeah, it's, it's a grid of pipes that are actually underneath that, that would catch.
So any fluid after you've cut, you've washed it through, does it go directly into the dry detention area?
It does.
And then where does the water go from the dry detention area?
After it stages up and, and goes into, goes through the control structure, which has the limited, has a water quality, we're inside of that and limits the amount of...
But how does that protect from bacteria?
Well, the dry detention itself is, acts like a filter, so it's, it's dry detention, so by definition, it's supposed to be dry the majority of the time, so it's a foot above the wet season water table, so the, the, whatever would go into there, which is just like the oils from the parking lot and everything. That's the, the reason behind it. Typically, doesn't flow out of the site. It's gonna, it's gonna drain through the ground on-site.
Well, I mean, my concern would be that that's flowing into the, the Spring Creek watershed and into Spring Creek.
After treatment, yes.
And that provides so that the enteric bacteria that comes from feces doesn't get there?
I mean, it's, it's there for several reasons, for nutrients and things that, things that actually to settle the water for things that would carry that bacteria and, and other nutrients that come from fertilizer, things like that, not specific to animal waste. I mean, but that's not, but it's...
But it's different from the concern that people have about septic systems which drain? Because, isn't it the, the liquid from that that is sub-concern? I mean, how is it different from that? That's my concern.
Um, I guess it's not. It's gonna drain, it's gonna drain through the ground just like a septic system would.
Well, the, the difference, there is a difference as far as the solids are picked up.
Correct. Yeah, the solids are gonna be picked up and hauled offsite, so the, the liquids are the part that would be going through the system.
Right.
So, sorry. And it's cleaned regularly because they have to, and, and the clients here, the owner can, can talk about that, that program, but if they're cleaning it regularly, there's not a huge chance for that to, you know, you're not going to get a lot of it washing down through the system for the solids.
Fine.
You want to speak?
Yeah.
Okay.
Hi, for the record, I'm Brian Franco, and I'm the vice president of real estate for American Pet Resorts. Appreciate your concern, and invariably, that's, that's often a concern wherever we go. As, as we mentioned earlier, we have 33 operating resorts. Currently, we have 15 in the state of Florida, and the St. John's River Water Management District or Southwest Water Management District are pretty, pretty critical about what goes into their stream system, just as you are in the creek systems. But with regard to just how we operate and the design of this system, it's not just water going below this turf and going directly into the pipe. We also, the pipes are socked, first of all, and then they're embedded in several inches of, of stone, both fines just under the, so that, so in terms of a filtering system, we have several area opportunities for filtering any, any bacteria... we have several area opportunities for filtering any, any bacteria and concern that you have with regard to, to waste ultimately percolating into the streams system. So we have, we, so we have the turf, all the solids are collected. The other, the other thing we do is we use a lot of water to wash our, our turf playyards, both inside and out. Safe, clean, fun is our motto, and obviously, safety and cleanliness go to, go hand in hand, and we're very concerned about that as we operate. So, so everything is scoop, everything's washed down, and, and then once it does go through the turf, then you have several inches of layers of filtration as well. So, and then you also have a pipe that socks. So by the time that water, I would, I would, I would say, I don't have any science behind it, but it's been diluted so dramatically by the time. And then when you add, add the ability to then, then for that water to drain into a dry detention and also serve, which also serves as a filtering, I would, I would, I would say that there's very remote possibility that anything that's damaging to the environment would make it into the creeks by then.
In your other installations, has anybody asked you to monitor that at all?
No, ma'am.
No.
And, and as I started the conversation, St. John's River Water Management are very concerned about what goes into their creeks as well. And I can tell you, we have had no issues with St. John's River Water Management or the water management districts within the state of Florida.
Okay.
Food for thought.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Fred?
Yeah, I've got piggybacking what our, on our chairman for the day, Amy, has asked you.
Queen for the dead.
Aren't you, aren't you connected to a sanitary sewer? With, with your restrooms and all that?
Yes.
Why, why not just pump all this into the sanitary sewer and let, let it be treated in a normal way that, I'm sure it'll cost some additional money, but that would be a much better solution. And the other thing I want to point out, you're, in the presentation, twice the five-acre site in Burnwood was referred to as a model thing. And I can tell you, I've personally received phone calls, complaints, it's not in my district, but about noise, it's not above the noise level, but it's what you call the nuisance level, a barking dog. So I, I don't know what, you might speak to what you're doing about that. Are they overnighting there too? Cause they were talking about daycare.
Well, let me speak to the sewer portion of that, and then you can talk to the owner about the, the other parts. So we are connected, we will be providing a private grinder pump station onsite connecting to a forced main with Benita Springs Utilities. Benita Springs Utilities would not allow us to drain an outdoor area into their system due to the amount of water that would be provided by the rain and other items. So anything internal to the building does drain into their system. So if there's bathrooms, you know, which probably happens, I'm sure, in the, the inside when they're in their holding areas, that stuff, when it gets washed in, would, would, would wash into the sewer system. But the outdoor play, which, and that may be another point that Brian can speak about, you know, they're gonna go out there to get exercise and stuff, but they're not sitting out there all day, is my understanding, and I'll let him talk about that. So there's gonna be some of that bathroom stuff going on inside the building, which will go into the sewer system, so it's not 100% of that. And I'll let him speak to the other items.
Well, again, odor and noise are also often concerns in the communities in which we operate. And we run a pretty tight ship with regard to how we operate. We typically platoon groups of dogs out for a period of time and then back in. As far as noise is concerned, our, if you look at our operating hours from 6:30 to 7 during the week, after that time, all our, all the pets are indoors. And in this case, this is a little bit of a different facility as, as, you know, most of the operations inside. Our typical flagship prototype, if you will, we have a lot more outdoor areas. So in those cases, there, there's even more concern with regard to that. But, so this is an indoor facility in, in the fairly limited areas for outdoor. But the dogs are platooned in and out during the course of the day. Of course, it's warm down here a lot of the months of the year, and, and most of that time, the dogs are inside. We do have an indoor play area as well, so the dogs get exercise either way. But, and, and then on the weekends, our hours are eight to five. So there may be an occasion where some of our dogs might go out for a potty break and, you know, after seven or after five. But for the most part, we, we feel like we manage that pretty well, pretty tightly, and limit the amount of aggravation or, or noise that, that one might be concerned about late into the evening hours. It wouldn't be our dogs out there barking.
Could, could you modify your schedule to where you didn't put them out till seven in the morning? Cause seven in the morning is a magic number, I think, in a lot of our ordinances pertaining to sound. Before seven, you're supposed to be quieter than it, after seven, it's not, it's not as big a, big a deal.
Well, I, I don't know what legally, what we would do there, but we do open at 6:30. That's not to say that all the dogs are running out at 6:30 in the morning. It's really just getting our facilities open. As far as the sound, again, it's, it's not several dogs out there all together barking at 6:30 in the morning. I would, I would suggest that the ambient sound of, of the traffic on the road is higher than, in many cases, than the dogs barking, or a few dogs barking here and there.
That, 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 that's what nuisance noise is. Traffic is something you get used to because you hear it all the time, and it kind of blends in. A barking dog, even if its decibel rating is not up at a bigger number, is, is a nuisance because it's unexpected and it doesn't happen all the time, so.
No, I appreciate that, Councilman, I understand that.
Are there any, I'm sorry, are there any other questions?
No, but it's also a commercial area.
Yes, ma'am.
For their own residents.
Yeah.
Do we have the staff? We don't have any public, right?
No, I, I, if you just want me briefly to comment on the noise issue. So it could be made a condition of the approval that the dogs are not let out into the open run area till 7:00 AM. The noise ordinance does, even in commercial areas, has a decibel limit of 72. Or of course, a non-interruptive, because there's also a catch-all, not sort of a reoccurring noise that is, would be a nuisance. So seven o'clock is the magic cutoff on that, if you want to consider that. Otherwise, it would be just, they would be caught up in those noise ordinance if that becomes an issue in the future. Staff does have a presentation, and then if we have any public, then yes.
Derek, I thought we had a provision that had to comply with the noise ordinance, so would we need a separate one, or?
No, you always, you always have to comply with the noise ordinance. I think the question that Councilman Forbes was raising was, could you just agree to, to not let your dogs out so it's not, it doesn't become a, an issue at all? You know, per se, you won't have any dogs out, so there won't be any complaints.
So you might want to have a separate condition, okay.
Thank you.
Good morning, City Council. For the record, Jacqueline Gensen, good to see you all. It's been a while since I've been able to present in front of you. As you can tell, I am not Mr. Michael Fegan. He was the lead planner assigned to the case, but he has since chosen a new career path, and we're very happy for him. So I have elected to go ahead and bring the case to finality today through this adoption hearing. What you'll see before you on the screen is the review team that was party to review of this application. And the request, I'll try to go through the items that the applicant has already spoken on in the essence of time. Zoning board recommendation, included in your packets was the minutes and also zoning ordinance that does encompass a new condition, that is condition 12, which Ms. Hewitt already explained. The primary discussion points really during the zoning board hearing were relative to parking and drainage in terms of the water quality concerns that were already discussed today by the board. Other concerns were the location of the playyards, how long the dogs would be outside. Also, an inquiry about veterinarian services, who would they be available to? The canine solid waste pickup, which we explained pretty much in good detail. Lighting, and then emergency preparedness, especially in terms of if there's, you know, a hurricane in the future, how do they handle evacuation and preparedness for those pets? As we explained, there is a revised condition 12 included in your packet, and also an accompanying master concept plan for your review and consideration. And as they explained, it was a unanimous recommendation of approval by the zoning board. We already went over the city location, the location map, which was also covered by the applicant in detail. We went over the future land use classification and the current zoning of the surrounding property, as the applicant did explain the conditions that are around the area. Staff did feel it made the compatibility requirements based on the request. We already went over the master concept plan. These are the two areas for the revisions relative to condition 12 to address the concern about needing more parking, even though the applicant explained that most of the service is a drop-off style type of service for their clients. There are architectural renderings also included in your packets, again, showing the various elevations of the building. This is the main storefront. As you can see, the drive-up area, bird's eye view of the entrance. The proposed uses are also enumerated into the zoning ordinance in terms of the permissible uses. The proposed development regulations are also included, and as they explained, there is a revision to the maximum height. High neighborhood compatibility, our staff is in agreement with the applicant's analysis for neighborhood compatibility. The environmental considerations, we did have our environmental science reviewer on the review application. And as the applicant also explained, there is no species on site. Most of the land cover is exotic. And also due to the site constraints, there is a landscape betterment plan to help demonstrate consistency with our Benita Beach, oh, sorry, our US-41 overlay, which is included in Attachment B as a part of the ordinance. Traffic considerations, this application was reviewed by our traffic engineer, also by the Florida Department of Transportation in relationship to the proximity to US-41. And then we have all these other elements that will be incorporated as site improvements as part of this petition request. Stormwater drainage, we also had our engineering team as part of the review, and we have additional stormwater requirements for additional water quality treatment that they will be incorporating into the design. Again, this is the engineering plan, which Mr. Addison covered in detail in the presentation. Comprehensive plan, we are in agreement with the applicant's analysis of the comprehensive plan, and our analysis is also outlined in the accompanying staff report. The deviations, the applicant presented, as they explained, three deviations. Staff did review those applica, or those deviations in accordance with Chapter Four, where there's a two-prong evaluation for that. Based on those justifications, staff did recommend approval. Zoning board also agreed with those recommendations for your consideration today. And would you like me to go into more detail on these? Okay. And based on the findings for plan developments, staff found that the applicant didn't meet all criteria for the findings for plan development and rezoning applications. Therefore, we did recommend approval with conditions as outlined in the draft zoning, draft zoning ordinance. With that, if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Do we have any questions, Council?
I move to approve.
No? No, I, I just want, I think we should, I mean, I concur, but should we incorporate some language that Derek had suppo, had suggested in regard to limiting the outdoor activity to post 7:00 AM in the morning? Or, or no? Do we want to just do a straight approval? Is that what your proposal is?
Yes.
Okay. And that's with the conditions that are articulated by the staff?
I don't think they have.
And, and the zoning board?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second?
I move to amend, to add that seven o'clock, not doing outside activities till seven o'clock.
It is a, a second for the amendment? I'll second it. All right, and so we have to vote on the amendment first?
Correct.
Okay, roll call.
Does the, well, the discussion, does the seven o'clock work for the applicant? You said you're probably mainly just opening up the, the business and getting going.
Yeah, yeah. Of course, as you know, if you own a pet, they gotta go, they gotta go. I, I, I think that, as the attorney stated, that we, either way, we would have to comply with the current sound ordinance, so I would prefer to, to leave our hours as is with the idea that, you know, if, if we are in violation of noise ordinance, then obviously, you know, we would have to control that whether it's at 6:30 or 9:30, so.
Would it work if it was just not the playtime and, but, you know, having to use the facilities?
Yeah, I would, I would hate to not allow a dog outside to do their business, have to wait, make them wait for half an hour, if you will.
Well, that's what I mean, cause, cause the outside is more of the play area.
So if you want to be specific about allowing dogs out, play during, for playtime after, at seven o'clock or later, I, I would be in agreement for that, but.
Because the end time was for the playtime, but, cause you said they still could go out to use.
I mean, that, I would want them to be able to take the dogs out to go potty as soon as we open. As far as, if you want to separate it from, from actually having playtime out there, we would, I'd be amenable to have that restriction.
When, when you take them out to do their business, then are you gonna take them back in, or are you gonna leave them out?
Wouldn't bring them back in. I mean, it's, we would manage it.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. It's hard, it's hard for me to, to make a decision on that when we have 33 operating facilities that are all operating consistently the same way at the same time, so. I, I would commit that if, if there is issue, if there are issues, even if it's for potty time, that we would address it immediately.
So I would leave it at 6:30. Cause I know that when my, I, I, I'm a dog person, they're not barking, they're doing their business.
Yes, yes.
And then they're smelling what the other dogs are doing.
Yeah.
So it's, they don't make noise. And so, and if they do, you, you agree that you would change it.
Why don't we vote on the amendment?
Yeah, the amendment has modified to they're only gonna be out to do their business, and then the playtime starts at 7:30.
I would agree, seven, seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock.
I would agree to that.
So he could just amend his own amendment?
If, if there's consensus, you know, when, when, I don't want, I didn't want to bring the book this morning, but.
Okay, yeah, where's the book?
Yeah, generally, if, you know, it's not, it's not expected that the exact language of your motions are exactly gonna be translated to paper. They're, they're supposed to be general, and so if everyone's okay with the, the modification to the amendment, then we can just vote on the amendment.
Right.
Because even the other, the hard, you know, you said it was gonna be 6:30 to, what was it, seven?
Seven or what's that?
On, on weekdays, and then eight to five on weekends?
Correct.
So even at the five or the, the 7 PM, the dogs are still gonna go out after that to use the bathroom.
Correct, for potty primarily, yeah.
So, you know, it'd kind of just be the same thing, you know, they could come out before to use the bathroom, but not for playtime.
Right.
Yeah.
So I, I feel comfortable with that.
Okay, so I'll resecond, I'll second it again as amend, and we now have, and if there are no more discussion, we'll vote on it.
Okay.
Okay? So roll call.
Councilwoman Amy Corr, Corramba?
Aye.
Councilwoman Laura Carr?
Aye.
Councilwoman Michael Gibson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Fred Forbes?
Aye.
Okay, so it passes. So now we have to vote on.
On the primary motion.
The primary motion.
From Ms. Carr.
Any disc?
I'd like to make, I'm gonna vote in favor of this, but I would like to make a statement for the benefit of Chairman Curlander and also John Domer. When we have developments like this, where we're filling, what is it doing to the surrounding property owners? I mean, that, you're, there's water that was on that property that can't stay there anymore, and there's not a, almost a square foot left on, you couldn't put a retention pond on this because the site is used up between parking, drives, the drive retention area, the play area, and all that. So I would hope that the next time we have a project, that that's looked into in more depth. And even though South Florida Water Management is our, what do you call it, permitter, I can tell you that I've personally been in situations where if I can tell you that I've personally been in situations where if I told you what I, I found, you wouldn't, it would not, I wouldn't want to read it in the paper, so we need to look at this further.
Are we ready to vote? Okay, let's call the question. Roll call.
Councilwoman Amy Cora, Coramba?
Aye.
Councilwoman Laura Carr?
Aye.
Councilwoman Michael Gibson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Fred Forbes?
Aye.
Okay, motion goes. Excellent, excellent presentation. Thank you very much. I love being queen for the day. Oh, wait, we have to see, do we have any minutes? I didn't see any minutes in this thing. No minutes? So we'll pass on approval of the minutes? Do we have to schedule another meeting? No? All right. Do we have to have public hearing with no public? I mean, public comments?
No comments.
All right, then I'll call for adjournment.
I move to...
Okay. This is not bad before 10 o'clock.